Three. God, I wasn't doing it tonight.
Oh, well. Good evening, people. I call to order the Monday, April 5th, 2021 School Committee meeting. So, a call to order. First order of business is I've been asked by Ms. Saros that she may be given the floor to, um, to address the meeting. Ms. Saros, you have the floor.
Thank you, uh, Mr., can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry. Um, I just want to take the opportunity to apologize to those that were recently offended by my words on social media. At the time and in the heat of the moment, I did not see them as insensitive, but realized some were offended. And to you, I am sorry. Gun violence, if anyone knows me, gun violence has been something I've been fighting against for years and have met many families and individuals who have been impacted by such tragedy. I would never want anyone to deal with such atrocities. And with the last few copycat mass murders, it is disheartening for all the work that I've been a part of. No social media outlet shows every aspect of a person. And to those that were offended, again, please accept my apology. And please feel free to reach out to me via email. And, um, back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saros. Greatly appreciated. Moving on, consider, uh, first, uh, order of business routine matters is a consideration to the approval of the open session and the executive session minutes of March 22nd, 2021. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. We'll go with a roll call vote. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lemare?
Aye.
Mrs. Doland?
Aye.
Mr. Kacorus?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Those minutes are accepted as written. Moving on to communications and accommodations. Dr. Hackett?
Thank you, Mr. Devon. As you all know, today was a pretty big day, a pretty special day, I think, for us as a school department. We now are in full person, full day. Five days a week at our, at all of our grade levels. I would say that, uh, that puts us in a handful of school systems that have all K through eight, or at least grades one through eight are full day. But K through eight, all students in school, all students who want to be in school are in person in school. And there's too many people to thank. But I can tell you that, uh, there was so much work that was done behind the scenes to get to this point. We, you know, we just have a great group of people, great group of teachers and administrators, district leadership with, uh, from Mr. Lee through the directors and the principals, the assistant principals, who just really worked so hard to make sure that every detail was paid attention to. And I think that you should be proud of the work that they have done. Uh, and I know that it was great to have kids back in, in school today. Um, and I think that they were happy to be there as well. We have worked really hard on transportation, so we did have transportation at all grade levels today. We have a few bumps, uh, along the road, so to speak. If anyone picked up on the bumps along the road, that was one of my better ones for the day. We will continue to work on it. If you have individual issues, and many of you already taken advantage of this, uh, please email bps dot transportation at brain tree schools.org. Our team is working very hard to respond to all of your emails. And as the week goes on, I, I know that things will, will get smoother. So a, a big thank you to everybody. And I just really am quite impressed that we were able to, to, to pull it off, I think, as well as we did.
Thank you, Dr. Hackett. Any comments or questions from the, uh, school committee on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, please, we have the floor.
First of all, I'd like to say that I had the pleasure of visiting, um, three schools today. My first visit was to the high school. And, um, we have proclaimed, uh, April Autism Awareness Month. And I was able to, uh, meet with the students of Project Prove and, um, read the proclamation. And, um, afterwards, uh, made my way through the building and, uh, I was able to see a lunch period, extremely well organized. Went and looked at some different classrooms, uh, media center, which was, um, an area that has a transition area for kids that were coming back from full remote has, uh, really, those kids have been reassigned. They've made the movement of the desk so that more students would fit in the classroom. So very impressed by the organization up at the high school. This is our third week, I believe, of operation as well. Uh, I visited one of our middle schools that, you know, has, uh, a lot of, uh, issues as far as space normally. And I have to tell you, South Middle School was operating, uh, extremely efficiently. And, uh, I did get to, uh, see the lunch area, which, um, was very well done, as well as, uh, the classroom space and I got to speak to some of the students. Last stop on the way back to the office was Liberty School. And once again, extremely well, um, organized, uh, lunch program, as well as classrooms, classroom instruction. And all of the kids were excited, as well as the staff, to be back in school full time. And I think that, you know, the work that was done, uh, by Dr. Hackett and all of his staff, uh, has really paid off because unlike most, if not all of the districts, we are, and the pioneers really of getting our kids back to school first. And I don't know of any other district that can brag about having their kids in school in a safe manner, um, operating full day, all day. And it was really, uh, it was, it was a very moving, um, visit because it's the first time that, uh, these students have been able to go to school full time, all day, uh, since March 12th of last year. So several high school kids have been there for three weeks, but, um, very well done. And I just want to commend and compliment Dr. Hackett and all staff for doing such a great job. And like I said, the, the students are extremely excited. I must admit that, you know, at one point, I think it was around one o'clock, a lot of students were really tired. It was, uh, their first full day for, um, the K through, uh, eight. And that was to be expected, but gotta tell you, it's just, they're, they're doing a great job. The, uh, the staff and the students, um, are just doing an excellent job at keeping, uh, our schools open and making them, um, operate on a full day, all day schedule. So just wanted to mention that. And the other thing too is, I mean, it's, it, it's really, um, it's a very positive, uh, thing to get to do as mayor. And the previous mayor, Mr. Sullivan, said to me, if you want to put a smile on your face and you want to have a good day, go to the schools. And he was a hundred percent right. And I'm glad that I'm able to do that, uh, as he was. And, um, I just want everyone on this committee to know that, you know, this is some real positive stuff that, you know, has happened, uh, under our direction and leadership. And I think that, um, you know, you should all, uh, be commended on your hard work to get us to this point as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very well put. Any other comments or questions on this from the school committee?
Through the chair?
Yes, please, Ms. Saros, we have the floor.
Thank you. I, I just want to thank, reiterate the mayor sentiments. Thank you, Dr. Hackett, um, Mr. Lee, all the staff, all the teachers, especially this whole year, being able to adapt and change constantly with what's going on, with the, you know, infection rates going up and then kind of coming down, dealing with a lot. Again, thank you for all that you've done. My children couldn't have been more excited. I think I'm the one with the little kids here, that they were so excited, like the first day of school, back with the backpack ready, lunches made last night. So it's super exciting to have them back. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Saros. Any other comments or questions from people in the school committee? I have a few. First of all, there again, there are so many people to thank, and I know I'm going to leave people out. So I'm going to kind of jump around. First of all, the mayor's office, uh, and public health, Mary Beth McGrath, our nurses. Public health, um, came to the forefront on this and really carried the ball well in this. Are we perfect? No, we'll never be perfect with something as complicated as, uh, COVID. You look at central administration, Mr. Lee, Dr. Hackett, and all that are in this building, you know, helping us get the plans that were workable. The fact that we were able to work with our faculty, the faculty and the teachers. We know this is a difficult position for you. I appreciate the fact that we're willing to sit down and exchange ideas that make us better. And I, I, I do appreciate our faculty and, and, and dealing with the other unions, uh, staff, custodians, our, our, uh, lunch associates, the bus drivers i- i- in all that they're trying to do. Anthony, uh, I'm sorry, Andrew Moran, as far as what he's put forth, as far as trying to redo some of our, our bus routes and whatnot. To the individual, uh, principals at the individual schools and the secretaries that are the engine room of those individual schools. And the parents, how do you thank parents that have been so, so patient over the last year of something that's been just, just beyond words? Kyle, more than a few times, uh, speaking to you and other, you know, parents that are going through, that were going through hard times. Most difficult year of my life as far as trying to figure out going forward, but I, I don't mean anything on that. The, the previous people that I spoke to are the unsung heroes of getting our school system up off the ground and becomes, becoming something better. To each and every one of you, thank you very much. And again, the parents for your patience, thank you so much. Okay, moving on, uh, we do have gifts to schools. We have, uh, I believe, two things. First one is Bay State Texos, gifts to schools totaling $95. Two checks in the amounts of $32.25 and $62.75 for a total of $95 from Bay State Texos. I'll entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded. Second, we have East Middle School gift, gifts to school totaling $570. One check in the amount of $570 from Alliance Energy to be used towards activities and educational advancement of students of the East Middle School. I will entertain a motion to accept?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Okay, roll call group for acceptance of these wonderful gifts. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lemare?
Aye.
Ms. Doland?
Aye.
Mr. Kacorus?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Again, to all those that, uh, that are gracious enough to give you, give us gifts, thank you so much. It's greatly appreciated. Moving on, from superintendent and staff, uh, second reading or approval of the, uh, the, the year 2120 calendar. Dr. Hackett?
Thank you, Mr. Devon. It is kind of exciting and hard to believe at the same time that we're talking about 2122 school year. As we have discussed before, uh, we see, um, the school year next year is having certainly some restrictions around COVID protocols. It, I'm sure it'll, um, that information will be coming from the Department of Public Health and, and Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as the spring and summer evolve. But we do want to, um, get the calendar for next year approved. Uh, this is a calendar you have now seen a couple of times. We have had, uh, some feedback on it as early as late last week. I apologize, I'm sure this is not the easiest to see, but I don't know that I could make it any bigger. But we are coming back to school, uh, the first day for staff. Full teacher workshop day will be on the September 7th, which is a Tuesday. Labor Day is on a Monday. That, um, we would have full day of students' grades one through 12 on the 8th and kindergarten story hour on the 8th as well. And then the first day for all kindergarten and preschool will be on September 9th. It's fairly straightforward. It looks like what a pre-pandemic calendar, uh, used to look like and should look like. I don't know if you've had this now for a, a bit. Certainly happy to answer any questions if you have them. But you can, uh, you can kind of see that where, where the calendar takes us out and that we've built in, as required by law, we've built in five snow days. Interestingly, I did say at the last meeting, I believe, when, or the last time I talked about this, that, um, that Blizzard Bag Days would not be allowed next year. The commissioner, uh, in, in the last conference call he held with superintendents, uh, opened the door on that a little bit. It was not entirely clear of what the direction is going to be, but, uh, we're being told that guidance on that will be coming out, uh, within, within a couple of months. So I'm sorry, a couple of weeks. So if anything changes with that, we'll come back and have that conversation. It's not, not something you need to, to deal with in terms of, uh, approval or consideration of approval of the calendar.
Any comments or questions from the school committee on this?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Cobb-Lemare, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, we did get, um, correspondence just pointing out that, um, the first day of school would be September 8th, which is the last day of Rosh Hashanah. So I didn't, I did want to point that out to the committee. I don't know if we have any leeway or what the, what the thought process is on that, um, but I just thought I'd mention it.
I just would, uh, to that point, we did talk about, and I know certainly our office, um, has worked hard to make sure that we're communicating the holy days and, uh, not just communicating through it and deciding what we're going to do with the calendar, but our staff and principals receive a yearly email as to when the holy days are, um, and advising them not to give major tests or major assignments to be due on those days if students, uh, because of religious reasons, do not attend school. We, we are guided, uh, for the Jewish faith by the synagogue that's in, um, Hingham. And, you know, our, our thinking at that time was that Rosh Hashanah does start on the, I believe, on the evening of the 6th, um, and goes into the 8th. But the 7th commonly is the, uh, the day that, that many would take, uh, as a day, which for us would fall on a teacher workshop day. We will have teachers who, uh, will not, uh, likely be there that on the 7th. I did check with some school systems around, especially in the Metro West area. And the 8th seemed to be the common day that they were bringing back students. Now, all that said, uh, if, if, uh, if you decide that you do not want to have a student day on the 8th, then we probably would push the teacher workshop day to the 8th and bring students back in on the 9th. And it would, it would shift some on the kindergarten, uh, start. Well, yeah, it would, no, well, no, probably not. We'll probably start on the 10th. But it, all you effectively would be doing would be pushing the last day of school out from what is the, the 21st, if no school days are used, to the 22nd or from the 28th to the 29th, if in fact you get loaded up with snow days next year. So it's not a hard adjustment to make. I certainly am sympathetic to, uh, to the, to the, uh, parent. We did have a situation where we made that mistake a couple of years ago. We thought we could kind of, had kind of corrected it and had come in line with common practice. But again, um, you know, we, we can make the change.
Okay, maybe it's a, a situation where, um, w- we would, uh, get in touch with one of the synagogues in town and see, you know, if there is a way to mitigate?
We've already had, had that conversation. We've already been guided by them. So this is common practice would be.
Okay.
Many, many will take the 7th as the holiday. Less, fewer will take the 8th as also a, a holiday. But again, I mean, it's not a good day for a student to miss if, uh, the first day of school, especially coming out of this year. So I am sympathetic to it. My recommendation would be if, if you, if you would like to have this reconsidered, uh, that maybe we table the vote on this tonight and we could bring it back to you at a future meeting, which would be as soon as possible.
I'd be willing to entertain a tablement of this motion. I'm sorry. I, 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 I'll entertain a motion to table. So, Ms. Cobb-Lemare, you're making a motion. I'll, I'll accept a second on it?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote to table. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lemare?
Aye.
Ms. Doland?
Aye.
Mr. Kacorus?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe? Mr. Chafe, you, you're, you're muted.
Aye.
Okay. And the chair votes aye. Okay, this will be tabled. Let's see what we can do as far as, um, um, having some discussion and, and, and bringing this back at a later date, but not at a too later date. Um, let's see. From super and staff, administration updates. Mr. Hackett? I'm sorry, Dr. Hackett?
All right, I was muted. Thank you. Uh, really don't have anything beyond what was said in the communications. It's been, it's been, um, to say the least, uh, both with the return of students and, and as we've been going through, uh, item number four on the agenda, which is working on our, our FY22 budget. So I do not have any further updates.
Okay, that brings us to Finance and Operations Subcommittee update, uh, from the chair of that said Subcommittee.
Mr. Devon?
Of course, yes.
I'm sorry, we do, should have been handling communications, um, and this is my fault, I apologize.
Oh, is this the COVID safety standards that we received from, um, public health?
Yes. Ms. McGrath is on the call for, uh, to kind of walk through those.
Excellent. Ms. McGrath, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Devon, and the school committee members and Dr. Hackett and Mr. Lee. Appreciate the opportunity to appear before you this evening and speak on behalf of, of what I think is a very positive subject. As you're continuing to move forward and opening the schools to full capacity on a daily, five-day-a-week basis, we now are in the, um, season will begin talking about commencements and graduations. And the state health department has released the COVID safety standards around commencements last week. So those were forwarded to Dr. Hackett and Mr. Lee, as well as Maekor Korsen and the team on our side. So I am delighted to advise that commencements can occur. Of course, there are certain COVID safety standards that have to be followed. But I feel that working with Dr. Hackett, Mr. Lee and the mayor, that the town and the school department can work very closely together to make for a wonderful graduation event this season. So just a few of the bullet items, there's about a four-page document that the state health department released that outlines all of the safety standards. And there are four specific, uh, categories that they're looking for, distinct categories. Capacity limits in operation, social distancing, hygiene protocols and cleaning and disinfectant. So I'm just going to run real briefly through some of the highlights of that. And I'll be working very closely with, um, Mayor Korsen and the school department to help them, uh, in meeting those standards. One of the things that they do talk about is, um, the opportunities to have graduation ceremonies or commencement ceremonies either indoors or outdoors. And it does make a difference based on the capacity limits where that event would be held. In speaking with Dr. Hackett, he has advised that the graduation ceremony will be held outdoors, much like it had, was last year and the years past. So a commencement that's held outdoors is not subject to specific capacity limitations. So that's great news. The social distancing requirements still need to be met, not only for graduates as well as staff members, but also for, um, separation, at least six-foot separation for graduates, staff members, but also for groups. And when I say groups, so what's being allowed is if you have members, students can bring or invite up to six guests within the same household or grouping. So if the guests are, are in the same household, I guess we'll call it household or grouping, then they can stay within their own six-member cohort. They would just need to separate between themselves and other groups, six feet. And I know Dr. Hackett will be working and Mr. Lee will be working, uh, with their team to make sure that that can be met for guests of graduates. The graduates themselves would need to be spaced six foot apart, as well as staff members that would participate in the event. They are asking that ceremonies be held i- in as brief a fashion as possible and that there be no communal gather, communal gatherings or receptions, either before the event or after the event. So again, just a review of the attendance, the guests are limited to no more than six guests per graduate. Guests, they have to reg, there is a registration requirement that must be done in advance of the registry of the commencement so that number one, they, the school department knows who will be present. And also there was, there would be an opportunity to be able to, uh, screen individuals to meet the COVID requirements. So there is a, a registration slash ticketing requirement that would need to be met. So that that piece of the COVID requirement would be followed. And that would also help with any type of contact tracing if that became necessary. Again, the graduates must be seated six feet or standing six feet apart from one another. Guests that are not part of the same household or grouping must be seated at least six feet from one another. Guests that are part of the same household or grouping can stay within their six-member cohort, within six feet of each other. Face coverings are mandatory. They're required for not only graduates, but also staff members and guests. And that's during the entire event. So that hasn't changed. I do realize it's outdoors, but it has not changed. The only time that, uh, face masks can be removed are if during commencement, there are speakers that would be at the podium, speaking six, at least six foot away from someone else. And then, uh, of course, cleaning and disinfecting of any microphones that may be available for use. And, um, I know that the safety, the cleaning and hygiene protocols will be followed. And, um, just wanted to provide that it's a bullet points, but I'll be going through more closely with Dr. Hackett and Mr. Lee and the mayor as we get closer to the event. But I feel like that's a positive step in the right direction, that there will be another successful graduation, I'm sure, here in Braintree.
Thank you very much, Ms. McGrath. Greatly appreciated. As always, uh, thank you to you, your staff, that, you know, dovetail with our staff in, uh, nursing seamlessly. Uh, we look forward to doing the best we can to have another successful graduation this year going on from there. Again, thank you to you and your staff.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Doctor?
If there's any good news out of this, it sounds very similar to what we did last year. So, uh, we, we have a year under our belt now of pulling off, uh, a COVID environment graduation. So I do appreciate, um, the information from Ms. McGrath and, and to her point, we'll continue to work, uh, together, as well as, uh, with, um, uh, Dr. Scully and the high school administrative group as we put this together. And we will likely begin really planning in earnest, um, shortly. Well, it has, it has begun at the high school some, but, uh, you'll hear more as we, as we move through, uh, the rest of April into, into May.
Excellent. Thank you, doctor. Are we still looking towards putting on some type of a parade and whatnot?
We are in discussions, which will we'll be back, be back to you.
Okay, thank you.
High school's been a little busy.
Okay. Moving on to four, which is Finance and Operations Subcommittee update. Uh, that will be given by the chairperson of said Subcommittee, Mr. Korsen. Are you ready to give your report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Then you have the floor.
Before I turn it, before I turn it over to Dr. Hackett, I just want to update everyone. We met on April 1st, uh, last Thursday. And we, we continue to work through the budget numbers that the administration has worked very diligently to provide. The good news from our last meeting, and this will be your first, kind of your first reading of where we are with the budget, is that when we had the initial conversations a couple of weeks ago, I know we talked about a 10% reduction and, um, that was the target. Through a lot of effort by the administration and a lot of work to bring the budget that you'll look at tonight, we've reduced that, uh, 10% to 5% with some revenue offsets. And Dr. Hackett will walk you through that. So we're, we're pleased to be in the position we are at this point. And Dr. Hackett will walk you through the logic and how we came up with the number. And, uh, we certainly will entertain questions when Dr. Hackett is, is through. So I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Hackett.
Thank you, Mr. Korsen. And through, uh, you, Mr. Devon, we, we, um, oh, we really, what you're going to see tonight is, is still a relatively high level discussion of, uh, where we are in the process. Uh, the Finance and Operations Subcommittee will be meeting again on Thursday. Um, and then next Monday at your school committee meeting, you will be, uh, getting the presentation from, uh, or you'll be hearing from them again and hearing from us again, uh, as to where we are. Mr. Devon always says, and, and when we're talking about budget, uh, the two biggest factors, uh, are unknowns for school departments right up until, uh, the first day of school, which is always kind of a unique way to run a business. But, uh, that is the way it is for us. We never really assure what our revenue is going to be until after we've gone through this process. And sometimes, uh, there have been years where the legislature has not acted on their budget until July and we've not received our final number. And we've not received our final number until then. Uh, and then enrollments, um, we know the kids we have in front of us now. We pretty, we're hopeful and pretty sure that most of it will be with us next year, just in a different grade, next grade level. Uh, but we really never know what the, um, what the influx might be. And, and there have been years where we have, um, had significant numbers of students, uh, unanticipated. Students enrolling over the course of the summer, uh, and unfortunately, they don't, well, they. Well, there was one year where, uh, at Flaherty School specifically, um, I think every single new kid who came into the fourth grade. That summer or one grade level came into Flaherty. And we ended up having to hire an additional teacher late in August, uh, and convert the media center into a, into a classroom. So, uh, we all know, and you've all, most all of you have been through this, uh, you know, flexibility is, is pretty key. And, you know, we do the best we can to, um, get to numbers that we know, um, can support our students. So our focus with the reductions has been to stay as far away from the classroom as we can. And specifically to stay away from program. I mean, there's really no other way to reduce what you will see. Will end up being in the net about a $3.6 million reduction in this proposed budget. Um, we have provided an off, offsets of, of a million dollars, uh, in federal funding. And almost another, really 1.4 million, um, if there's another $400,000 and will be considered state funding through Circuit Breaker. Which means that we are funding 1.4 million dollars of FY twenty-two or would be if, if you were to approve this. And it was, uh, to go forward to the council, will be funded with one time monies. And I say that, um, because it's going to be important for you all to remember, um, as I will not be here next year. And then you can blame everything on me, which is, um, how I would do it. I'll do it going into my new job. Um, that 1.4 million dollars, uh, you are funding outside of the operational budget. And the net effect, uh, would be that you would need to either find monies for those items in FY twenty-three. Uh, it looks like that will be, uh, possible, given that the level of federal funding that's going to continue to come in. Or you would work them back into the operating budget, or you would need to make reductions or some kind of combination thereof. So, um, I just want to make sure that everyone is thinking about this in terms of it not being. And we never have thought about the budget process being a one year process. Uh, we've always planned out more than one year. The other thing that we will do this year, which is new for us, is kind of going to be the reverse of what we've done in the past. Where we have provided, uh, priority listings beyond the maintenance of effort or the recommended budget. Uh, of those things that we would add should additional funds become available. This year, we will be providing, uh, a restorative budget, which would, uh, provide you with our thoughts. Um, on the priorities for items that we would recommend be put back into the budget. If in fact, additional funding should become available. It is still really early in the game, everyone. So, um, all we have right now is House One's budget, the governor's recommended chapter seventy number. Generally, we do not benefit tremendously from chapter seventy. Uh, the new funding was, was not intended for school systems and, and towns like Braintree. Um, that, you know, we didn't see the influx of millions of dollars that, uh, some other school system saw, uh, through the Student Opportunity Act. Which is the intent, um, whether we like to hear it or whether you all like to hear it or not, Braintree is considered to be a wealthy town. Um, and the tax base is strong enough to be able to fund public education without a lot of additional state support. Um, and as you know, that's not true in, in other towns and other communities. And we're seeing that now with the distribution of the federal funding that's happening with some communities around us. Who are receiving an awful lot more, uh, federal dollars than we are. So with all that, as a starting point, we have, uh, we have rolled this, this budget up into three major, uh, categories. Curriculum instruction, school administration, um, that is the bulk of our core business. That's what we do. That's teaching and learning. That's everything that we put into classrooms. Um, with the exception of, of, of a few services such as guidance and health services. Um, but that is the bulk of, of where our funding goes. Building grounds, maintenance and utilities and transportation, uh, 6.7 million. These are the current dollar figures in the current year budget FY twenty-one, the budget we're sitting in right now. Uh, this is the amount of money in the operating budget that we have designated for these categories. And then you can see all other district wide services and technology for about 7.5 million for total budget of 73 million, 218, 902. So I'm going to use those categories again, when, when I, when we show you, uh, where we are in, in the process. Just looking at where we've been in what we're doing. As you can see up in the top left hand corner, FY twenty-one approved budget, the 73 million I just referenced. Um, we started this process, uh, at 76 million, 659, 152. Which is a 3.4 million dollar increase or 4.7%. Those of you who have been on this committee recognize that probably, I mean, 4.7 generally is when we just, when we just take everything we're doing now. And we just roll everything forward without any kind of cleanup, any kind of accommodations for retirements or anything else. Uh, that's generally where we land. Um, after we went through another, um, piece of work and a couple of weeks of work on, on that number. We came back with, uh, to the finance and operations subcommittee with a preliminary draft budget of seven, 75 million, 989, 152. Which brought us to a 3.78% um, increase. So from that point, uh, now we are, and, and we are working from with, uh, with a directive of, of a. Of a 10% reduction or the guidance of a 10% reduction, um, that reduction was coming off the 76 million, 659. Um, we are now, um, have, we're now looking for, and we are proposing at this point in the process. Uh, a total budget of 71 million, 574, 118. Which as you see represents a little over $5 million reduction. Uh, or 7.10% reduction from the maintenance of effort number of 76 million dollars. That number is the reduction. That's the expenditure reduction. And this number would be the number, the bottom line number that you'd be recommending, um, to, uh, the mayor. Uh, who would determine what he was going to do with it from that point on, uh, as the process is outlined within the charter. Uh, so that number would be your starting point if it were approved and went through the entire process for your FY twenty-three budget process. We are actually, um, proposing that we make 3.6 million dollars in expenditure reductions. By using the revenue offset that I mentioned earlier of 1,400,000. That's one time revenue, um, although again, uh, the way the money has been, um, coming to, uh, towns. And, and as it's been discussed from the federal government, um, there are restrictions certainly on that. But we have been, um, allowed to, we're allowed to spend that over a multi-year period. So I believe, and I think it's reasonable certainty, and I think it's, it's the right, um, professional decision to make. Uh, given what we know right now, that those funds, using those funds as a revenue offset makes sense. Um, at this point, and, uh, you know, the hope is that as you get through the next couple of years. That you will be able to kind of feather out the revenue loss at the local level, which is, which we are heavily dependent upon. Given the fact that, um, you know, we are coming out of an economy that's been impacted significantly by COVID. Particularly in the service sector of our, our economy here in Braintree. So with that, the actual reduction, um, of expenditure cuts that we are working with. Is the 3,685,000 dollars, which is about a 5% uh, reduction, uh, in expenses overall. So I would just like to take a second to stop there because I just want to know if anyone has from the committee. Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, um, any clarifying questions? I, I just on what I've presented here, I'm not hoping not to be asked more detail or specific questions. But I just want to make sure that everyone understands, you know, kind of where we started with the maintenance of effort, um, here. Um, the, and then how we, where we are at this point in terms of the revenue offset and what that represents.
Any questions from people on the school committee on this as was presented to you?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Carla Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Hackett, does, does this, does the budget take into effect the American Rescue Plan? And any amount of money that we may get, um, from the federal government?
So what this, what this takes, it's a great question. Um, what this takes into account is what we know we have right now.
Okay.
We do not want to gamble on obviously, um, what we don't know for sure. Um, and that's why we will build that recovery budget that I mentioned at the beginning of this. So, um, you know, if, if more funding becomes available and we understand what the restrictions of those, of those funds will be. That would be a conversation that finance and operations subcommittee would have. Um, and that, that would come back to you as a, as a school committee. I, it's always, it's always a little risky to, to rely too much on one time funding. Um, but hopefully if there's additional funds, um, we would be able to think about, um, you know, maybe recovering some of the cuts. That we, we would have to make to get to the 3.6 million. The 1 million dollars that we, you see here is, uh, the actual federal funding, the restriction that was on, that's from S R two, which we're in right now. Um, the restriction on those funds are that I, you, we cannot spend, uh, we cannot use more than 75% of the total grant, grant allocation. As a revenue offset. So we have maxed that out at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
Any other comments or questions from people on the school committee? Okay, hearing none. Um, a couple of comments. Obviously, this is a tough situation. I, I, I said it first, devastating. Um, I think. There's a glimmer of hope, uh, perhaps from the federal government. Um, I have talked to our reps. Uh, CUSAC and, uh, two state senators. And they're weeks out as far as what we can expect, uh, on, on something like that. But I think it's, it's prudent that we look at this, these steps as we have them before us right now. With an eye towards, yeah, if a shining, uh, knight comes in and comes to save us. That we would then look at certain cuts that we can restore and go from there. I think the, uh, the, uh, good doctor quoted me on finance, good God, um, that, you know, it's, it's, it's. Two things we can't know is how many kids are going to show up in September and what we can expect from the state. Uh, they haven't, um, come to with those numbers, but, uh. It is what it is. We look forward to working with any and all people, uh, in administration and the mayor's office to do the best we possibly can. Um, Mr. Good Course, thank you for indulging me.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, just, uh, just for point of clarification.
Please.
The, the governor's budget as presented, as it sits right now. Shows a negative 100,000 dollar, um, amount for the town of Braintree. So if you take, um, the budget that's, that's been presented by the governor. And you look at Braintree, you will find that the 300,000 dollars in additional funding that we have been allotted. Is, uh, negated by 400,000 dollars in expenses that the state is charging us for. In addition to our typical charges that come from the state. So we are at this point right now, 100,000 dollars, um. Deficient in the governor's budget. In addition to that, the American Rescue Act money, if, you know, I'm sure you have all seen that we are at. 3.669 million is all that we're getting. It's based on a formula that does not allot, uh, communities like Braintree, uh, to receive a, a lot of funding. Uh, we have neighbors, um, that are receiving a lot more money than us, based on the formula that's put together. The county is receiving 7 million dollars, uh, for Braintree's portion of the county. Uh, we do not have the same type of county government that they do in other parts, uh, of the country. So we're not sure what's going to happen with that. Um, as far as the governor, the governor, um, recently, uh, stated that. He was going to allot 100 million dollars. I don't know whether it's from the original CARES Act money, whether it's from state funding or whether it's from the Rescue Act. To offset, uh, the lack of funds that, uh, some four different communities received. And base it on how hard they were hit with the COVID, um, virus. So one of those communities is Randolph, and I was on a call with Randolph and some other communities. And Elizabeth Warren had the call to talk to communities that were not getting, um, really their fair share of this funding. And Randolph is now going to get more money. I don't know what that number is. Because the governor made the announcement that Chelsea Randolph and a couple of other communities were going to get this 100 million. I am lobbying the governor. I'm sending a letter to the governor asking for additional funding. The governor has almost double what all the cities and towns are getting through the Rescue Act coming to the state at his discretion. Um, the difference between Braintree and some of these other communities, you know, it's kind of like a business with PPP. If a business made money in 2020, they weren't getting any PPP loans. Similarly, I feel that if a particular city or town had massive amounts of losses. Due to the fact that they rely on local receipts like meals tax, hotel tax. And, um, in, interest, tech, interest, uh, profits, uh, interest, et cetera. Uh, we have clearly been affected, uh, in a detrimental way of approximately 9 million dollars. And that's why everyone is working hard to get the budget, um, balanced. We are at a point right now where we don't have any guarantees from, uh, federal funding. Other than this 3.6 billion, which I believe we only get half of upfront. Um, so the reality of it is that within, we're a perfect example of why that money should come to us. Because as we progress through this and the governor starts to reopen things and gets everyone vaccinated. Which is frustrating as well. Um, but once those things happen. Then the economy will start to turn back in favor of Braintree. And when we start to see more meals tax numbers and hotel, hotel numbers. Those are the numbers that are going to start to bring back, uh, the revenue sources that we need to offset these one time uses. Like the 1.4 million that, uh, the doctor speaks about. So I would just say that we, as difficult as it is, you know, our success. And, uh, lack of reliance on state and federal government makes us the most vulnerable during, um, a situation like COVID. So I'm going to continue to lobby the governor. I'm going to send a letter. I'll get a copy to, uh, the school committee so they can see it. Um, but at this point, you know, we have to budget, um, based on what we have for funding. And we are negative 100,000 dollars coming from the state. And that's a fact. And that's, obviously the, the budget is going to be worked through with legislators. And we may see a better number than that. Let's hope so. But one, you know, my main responsibility is to balance this budget. And, um, in addition to that. Make sure that we have recurring revenue to cover the expenses that we, uh, create on a yearly basis. So we really need to, um, take that into consideration. And we are also actively pursuing every, uh, other revenue source. That is, is under the Rescue Act. There's a number of different things. There's water, infrastructure, um, uh, funding as well. So we're looking at all of them, all of the department heads have directed them all to look through to see what's available. Uh, through the Rescue Act and apply for it. And hopefully we will, uh, obtain some money there. But the reality really is that in order for us to get more funding to help us through the next couple of years. We really need the governor to step up and help us out. And I'm hoping that he recognizes the fact that Braintree, uh, is in desperate need of help. Due to the fact that our local receipts, uh, have been significantly affected. Um, and, you know, this is an opportunity for the governor to help us. Uh, by giving us the funding we need to get through the next couple of years. Until, uh, our revenue sources have strengthened. It didn't work out so well with the vaccines. Uh, they stopped giving us those. But let's hope that when it comes to the, I believe, 4 billion dollars that is coming through Rescue Act money. That the governor steps up and does the right thing for Braintree. that the governor steps up and does the right thing for Brantree. So I will keep this body updated as to the numbers, but I think the doctor and his staff have done a tremendous job at coming up with solutions to get us to a number that's not 10%, but at least a number that's close to that and gets us that much closer to balancing the budget overall. And if anyone has any further questions, I'm always available for a conversation if you would like to call me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Greatly appreciate what you the work that your staff has done. Any other comments or questions? Excuse me, the floor is Mr. Kacoros's. My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe Dr. Hackett has a few other pieces to go through that we discussed, namely enrollment. So Dr. Hackett, if you want to move to that slide, we can
We can go from there. Thank you, Mr.
Oh, okay. I thought you might have been muted. There you go.
I kind of wish I was. And you will be too by the time I'm done. So to show to come back to the three large rolled up categories that we were talking about earlier. You can see that when we brought the maintenance of effort budget, the rollover budget, you can see where the dollars fell to get to the 76.6 million in that budget. Again, not surprisingly, this is the core of what we do as a school department. Now you can also see next to that, the FY22 proposed budget and where those reductions we we would be targeting. And again, not surprisingly, we really have to go fairly heavily to our biggest category, and we've got to find ways to do that. And as I stated before, you know, what we're really trying to focus on is is not cutting program. And what's going to be unique about this budget cycle is that we you likely will be you'll have to decide and likely have to because of the timeline of the charter, vote a final number for FY22 before every single detail has detail has been worked out because there are just so many unknowns that we're facing right now. Particularly in around enrollment, we've had us, you know, a not a not a small population of students who went into private and homeschooling over the course of of the summer, last summer into the fall pandemic. And we just don't know. We know we also know that not a lot of people are moving in right now. You know, we've had a relatively stable enrollment, which is not typical. And I think, you know, my guess would be that the pandemic and just getting the logistics of moving somewhere down and what's available, what's open has been just different this this year than it has been in prior years. So though this budget, the proposed budget would be looking at a $4.5 million reduction in that in the curriculum instruction in school administration category, a $162,000 reduction in building and maintenance of grounds and and transportation. That looks light relatively, but we also know that we are still going to be dealing with the effects of COVID going into FY23. We still need to make sure that we have staffing in place to to make sure that our buildings are clean and disinfected, transportation is is working at full capacity. And as candidly, as we know, you know, this 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 particular category has always been a little bit light. So we would be looking to take less of a reduction there. Again, these category numbers could change. What we were really asking you to consider over the next coming meetings is the bottom line total of 71,574,000 or a 5 million, the 505, 5085 reduction. It just required technology. You know, the services, 388,640. You know, this includes guidance. This this number happens to include guidance services as well, health services, nursing. Going back to the comment I just made about the category above, we are still going to be dealing with the effects of the pandemic going into next year, and we have to make sure that we are fully staffed and funded to to manage our way through FY23. So we talked a little bit about this last time. We had already taken under the first draft of the budget, $670,000 worth of reductions, which included five elementary positions, which were enrollment based reductions. I'll show you some trend lines on enrollment just to help explain that. This was expected. We we have seen the bubble is making its way really now into the high school for the most part. It's lingering a little bit in the middle schools this year, but we know that going into next year, those numbers are going to be shifting fairly substantially and significantly into the high school. And we also were able to do that 295,000 through attrition, which means if those positions, that those are not anyone losing their job, those are five people who are going to be retiring, anticipated retirements for positions that we do not have to replace. Additionally, we are anticipating some other retirements as well. These particular positions would have to be replaced. Enrollment would would dictate at this point in how we are distribute our students across our schools, that we would need to replace these positions. But there's still a net reduction between the amount of salary that a person would be retiring at and and what we would be bringing in someone new at a lower level on the on the scale. So in total, that was a $670,000 reduction. I will say relative relatively painless reduction because we would likely have made that change in any given year anyway. So then we went, I just wanted to also now run you through the enrollment based on what I just said. So this chart shows you at the top, students who are grades K through four. This was effective. Well, you can see the years on the bottom from 2009 to 2019. We did not include 2000 in that would be the October of. So October of 2019, October of 2020 would be the number we would have had on here had we brought 2020 numbers in. But because of the pandemic, those numbers are just so skewed that we're really focusing on kind of planning off the enrollment numbers from 1920, more so than we are looking at 2021. So you can see what's happening again at the elementary level, K through four, the blue graph on the line on the top. We've seen a high enrollment of of in 2016 of 2217. And now we're starting to see the drop as that bubble moves through. You can see below that grades five through eight. And again, this is five through eight, not six through eight, as we are currently distributed at this is more representative of 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 East Middle School. So just keep that in mind as you're looking at those two lines. We went from 675 in 2009 to a high of of 2000, 1,926 in 2018. And now we're starting to see that. We started to see that leveling off in 2019, and we'll continue to see that trend in 2020. But then you can see on the bottom grades nine through 12th high school where where we're going in that trend line up will continue. We are currently at 2019, I'm sorry, at 1715. We're going to be knocking on the door of we are knocking on the door of 1900 right now. It will be a little bit over that next year, depending on how how the numbers break. So, you know, truly the effect of the bubble is kind of rolling its way through the school system. When you look at our overall enrollment year over year, we're we're relatively stable. But when we break it down and we look at this by the at the elementary level, because clearly when you start to see the downward trend in enrollment, that's an opportunity to shift resources or to make cuts that would not involve people, would not involve program, it would allow us to maintain the current level of programming that we have. So in any given normal year, we would be looking at this. This year, we're just looking, we have to look to not be able to look at those resources differently and think about, can we add program? Are there are there some things that we can do differently? This year, we have to take every single piece of those savings and and work them toward budget reductions. So when you go to our elementary level and just trying to look at that, the opportunity that we have there to make some reductions based on the enrollment trend, you can see that how the enrollments have gone specifically by elementary school. And a couple of notes here, we did not bring in 2020 also because that was the year that we would have brought fifth grade into East Middle School from Ross, Flaherty, Morrison, and sorry, Hollis as well. I didn't say Flaherty, I meant to. So we left that year off because it would just not have been a good representation. Also want to point out that when you see Liberty in 2016 at 448 and then 460 in 2017, and then a significant drop, that that drop was the same year that you approved and implemented. We implemented the flexible boundary policy. So we had a significant number of students who went from Liberty, who actually attended Hollis at that time. And then you can see where how how Morrison is trending. So you can see that all the buildings are trending slightly down except for Highlands. And we know that Highlands is is where our crunch is with with enrollment. It has been that that the case for a while. It's also the reason why we are looking forward to building a new South Middle School and bringing the fifth grade of of Highlands in Liberty into that school. When you peel it back a little bit more and just look at a specific side of town that is seeing the the largest drops in in overall school enrollment, you can see where Morrison is at the top here. You know, going from 426 students to 405 students is is relatively trendy because we are looking into this year, last year, this year, I'm sorry. And we can see that 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 decline continue, although I will say that Morrison is fluctuates quite a bit more than the other schools do. There are always years where we get a surprise at Morrison, and all of a sudden we have 20 kids who enroll that we didn't expect. So that one Morrison School is always a little bit unpredictable. Hollis, we've been using as our flexible boundary zone school. Hollis also happens to have the most room most number of rooms and flexibility, and that's why we chose it as a flexible boundary zone school, especially given its ideal location within the center of town. It's easy easier for us to use our existing bus routes to get students to Hollis should should we need to use Hollis as an overflow. Flexible boundaries at this point has been only families who are new to town, who are moving in have been considered for flexible boundaries. You know, so as we as we move forward and we talk about this a little bit more, you know, we may, we need to look at that definition, and we need to look at how our distribution of students are is falling, given the fact that we do have a a budget reduction that needs to be made. You can see the trend of Flaherty and Ross relatively the same. Again, this does include their fifth grade numbers, so these numbers will be will be less when we're back in full and our fifth graders are no longer in these schools. But we didn't want to take those out at this point. So this is really the will be the bulk of our work in the bulk of our conversation that will be we'll be talking about with Finance and Operations Subcommittee on on Thursday and and again, with you next Monday. We are trying very hard to stay away from program cuts because we recognize that, you know, programs, once they are cut, are very difficult to get back and just take a lot more time to 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 do, to get back into place. So you'll be hearing more from us and in more specifics from us. First, the Finance and Operations Subcommittee on Thursday. That Subcommittee will be discussing, and they will be bringing forward to you whatever is they decide they want to bring to you a week from tonight. And with that, Mr. Chair, I would take questions if
Are there any questions from the school committee concerning this? Again, yes, this problem area of the floor.
Thank you. I just want to thank Dr. Hackett for reiterating that the the budget that he's put forward will not include any cuts to programs because I think that's really important, and I think that's something that we would want to avoid. So I want to just thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb Lemaire. Any other comments or questions from the school committee? Hearing none, we'll be moving on. This is five, which is public comment. Because we've run a little over, we have some business and executive session about 15 minutes. Let's remember the rules of a public comment. One, each person has three minutes. Two, we ask you to please be respectful of any and all opinions, whether you believe in them or not. We ask it civil. We also ask you to talk to things that are pertinent to the purview of the school committee. Who's um, who's handling that? Is it is it Mr. Maron?
I've got it.
Okay, first person?
Julie Swain. Julie.
Ms. Swain, good evening.
Hold on just a second, I'm going to
Yes.
Ms. Swain had to be promoted to panelist.
Uh huh.
Now, if I can find her on that. Ms. Swain, you can unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can. Please, you have the floor.
Well, thank you. Hello, and thank you very much for giving me a moment to speak on a topic that I am very passionate about. I'm sure most of you know me for my relentlessness when it comes to mental health resources for our school and the safety of our children. Three months ago, I was introduced to Carla Saros and Karen Driscoll in the Safety Committee, which at the time was unaware that it even existed. And apparently, most of the parents are also unaware that this committee existed. I was so pleasantly surprised to see that the committee led by Carla and Karen was made up of Brantree's finest, including police, fire, teachers, guidance counselors, principals, and parents who, for the last year, have been working furiously and diligently behind the scenes to get programs and companies in to assess the security of our schools and the safety of our children. I am also pretty confident that most of the people are unaware that this venture to secure safety in the schools was started by Carla and Karen after the Parkland incident. They worked long with the members of the Sub Safety Committee to obtain funding to support, enhance, and initiate steps needed to ensure safety in our schools. I'm also sure that most parents in the town are unaware that through the diligence of Carla and Karen in their Subcommittee, we will be initiating the Sandy Hook Promise in our school systems in the near future. By empowering youth to know the signs and uniting all people who value protection of children, we can take a meaningful action in schools, homes, and communities to prevent gun violence and stop tragic loss of life. During the month of April and May, after many months of interviewing, researching multiple companies, the Sub Safety Committee has made a final decision to have another company come in who is trained, fully equipped with the knowledge and know how to come in and assess our schools for the safety and security, making necessary changes, advising the town on how to protect our children in the event of a god awful event. So that being said, we are all aware that in the last month, there have been four horrific, god awful shootings where innocent people have lost their lives in the hands of individuals who have suffered mental health crisis and have had a gun in their possession. But here in Brantree, behind the scenes during the last year, during the COVID protocols, during all the arguing and agony of getting our kids back to school along with their full time jobs, our Sub Safety Committee, led by Carla and Karen, have worked diligently, fearlessly, to get the appropriate actions in place to assure our schools are safe and our children are educated. And I should say that I'm very thankful for the both of them. I hope that the school committee continues to do right by our children and our schools and continues to support Carla and Karen in their Safety Committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Look at that.
I have to say, I think that's the first time anyone has gone right to the bell. That was
Yeah, right. Yeah. Wow, she's good. Our next
Person Kimberly D. Kimberly, if you could unmute.
Good evening, all, and thank you for allowing me some time to share. Ms. Swain, I'd first just like to address the woman that just spoke eloquently, directly, and to the point. I wish I had as much support for Ms. Saros as Ms. Swain does. Our school committee members are spinning out of control drastically with their political beliefs. Carla had given an apology, or rather, a feeble apology, in my personal opinion, and stated that we could email her directly if we wanted to speak to her. She has not responded to numerous emails, nor has Mr. Lee, the mayor's office, Kelly Cobb Lemaire, or Dr. Hackett's office. the Mayor's Office, Kelly Cobb-Lamir, uh, or Dr. Hackett's office. How do you want the townspeople to feel confident in our representatives when the likes of comments such as Ms. Lamir and Ms. Saros are taking place? I am told that Carla, who I don't know and really can't form an opinion on her other than her deplorable, hideous comments that were made and in my personal opinion, far worse than Ms. Lamir's. Because we, the townspeople of Braintree, have come to expect nothing less from Kelly. But Carla, it was heartbreaking. And I need for you to know that the mother of Denny Strong was outraged by your words because I have in fact spoken to her. I want to know why Ms. Lamir, who has no seats on any committees, and now Carla, I want to know why you two individuals feel as though you are representing this town and these students in a positive, professional, caring, loving manner when you say the deplorable things you say about other people. That's all.
Thank you. Our next person?
Sorry, I was.
Yep, it's okay.
Uh Karen Driscoll.
Ms. Driscoll?
I'm muted. And there's no mo either, so.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Great, excellent.
Good evening.
Hi, uh, my name is Karen Driscoll and I have one child in Braintree Schools. And I'm wondering if everyone listening knows that School Committee member Carla Saros is a working mom of three, who put herself through nursing school while her children were school-aged, or that she passed her boards immediately and worked at several nursing homes, and that she cared for elderly COVID patients at the very start of the pandemic, contracted COVID herself, was quite ill for a week or two, and went right back to caring for the elderly. During all of this, Carla started a local chapter of a national gun violence prevention group. And she founded the Braintree School Safety Advocacy Group, which secured 1 million in funding from voters this past fall to prevent a school shooting in Braintree. I know this because I work with Carla on these two groups, but I'm guessing a lot of people in town don't know this. But now that you all do know this information, does it make sense that someone who started two groups to prevent gun violence would disparage a young victim of gun violence? Perhaps we should entertain the possibility that Carla's comment on Facebook was taken out of context. Perhaps if we've read the entire conversation and then read a little about Carla, perhaps her comment on Facebook could be interpreted in a different way. Perhaps a frustration of someone working so hard to end something and it just won't stop. Another young victim of gun violence, whose voice, regardless of their opinions, has been silenced. Again, so senseless, so sad, so incredibly frustrating. But let's say you take that in and you still think Carla's comment was inappropriate. Okay, you're entitled to your opinion. So what to do about it? The knee-jerk reaction is resignation. There's a problem with that. We can't get enough people to run for School Committee. Unless people crying foul about Carla's Facebook comment are willing to run for School Committee, we don't have the luxury of tossing someone off the committee because of a comment on Facebook. We can't keep handling these situations with fire and pitchforks in the form of knee-jerk Facebook outcry, cries for resignation and a shameful rally at Town Hall. We need a way to hold our elected officials accountable in a way that does not distract us from what needs to get done. I'd like to suggest a solution. Guidelines for local elected officials and their social media accounts with a specific stepped plan for handling comments that upset their constituents. For example, can elected officials have social media accounts? Or do they need to surrender them? If allowed to keep them, should they have two accounts, one for their town position and one personal? If allowed to keep them, are their personal accounts fair game for their constituents? What are the rules for commenting on potential like potentially lightning rod issues? If there's an outcry of impropriety, what are the steps for accountability? Enough of this time sucking back and forth. This is all bull crap and it's embarrassing Braintree. If you think the idea of social media guidelines is a good one, please say so here. And if you'd be willing to work on a committee to develop an idea, please get in touch with me at kcdriscoll@gmail.com. Again, kcdriscoll@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Driscoll. Okay. Our next person?
Is um Mary Ellen.
Mary Ellen?
Good evening. Good evening. I just have a few comments. Um, in response to Ms. Driscoll, um, I believe that this is too little, too late if Carla is so involved with gun rights and helping people with all gun stuff. She probably shouldn't have made that comment about, oh, it doesn't matter what that kid thinks. He's dead. And the apology, I um, it was, it was a very feeble attempt at the apology. And Kelly and her, their deplorable behavior between Veterans Day, talking about the veteran just because he was a Trump supporter and doing something to his food, and this latest incident as far as this goes, is it's disgusting, it's deplorable. And on a final note, um, I have been in contact with newspapers in Colorado and have communicate have they've communicated back to me. So uh, something needs to be done here and both of them need to resign from the School Committee. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Um, Doctor, based on our timeline with um legal going forward, the executive session, um, we can, we can have one more person.
Okay, uh Kimberly D., I believe for the second time.
Okay. Kimberly D. Been recognized.
I'm sorry if there's other people that want to speak. Um, I just wanted to say that uh in regards to Ms. Driscoll, although it's a great idea for no social media, it needs to be pointed out that when you are a public official, you are no longer having a quote-unquote "private" life. So the only reason why Braintree is being embarrassed right now is because of these insidious comments that are being made. There will be a rally Wednesday. And from the looks of it, it looks like it will be a rather big rally because there are many people that have had enough. Unfortunately, you know, the police will be contacted tomorrow um, so that we can do it safely. But it's very important for Carla and Kelly, albeit Kelly probably doesn't care because she'll view this as, look at me, because that's how narcissists think. I do believe Carla made a mistake. But I also think in order to fix it, she really needs to resign. I too am a single mother of two children and put myself through law school, but I would never make a heinous comment about somebody's child being dead, killed by a gun, dead, and she thinks that it's funny and comical to be goaded and and make comments. I'm looking at your expression right now, Carla, and I can see it in your eyes that you don't seem to care even now. So that's why there will be a rally. And I really true hope that you will do the right thing and step down because there is an individual that would be happy to run for School Committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on because we do have a time crunch. Um, we will be entering into executive session. Uh, consideration to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30, Section 21 A3, to discuss a strategy for a negotiation of a collective bargaining uh contract pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21-1, to discuss, there's another one, uh, to discuss a reputation, character, physical condition and mental health rather than a professional compliance uh competence uh or an individual to discuss the discipline uh or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member or individual as the chair declares that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect in negotiation or the legal position of the Braintree School Committee. Um, I do believe we'll be taking a vote in this, so we'll be coming back um to this address. Um, the members of the School Committee have the uh executive session um um address. Um, I will need a motion to enter into executive session. So moved. All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Mayor? Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Lamir?
Aye.
Ms. Doland?
Aye.
Miss Yacoris?
Aye.
Mr. Chief?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That's 6-0. We'll be going into executive session. At which time we'll afterwards, we'll come back and uh make known the vote, so.
Mr. Devon, just to be clear for the people who are here who are looking to stay, um, the School Committee will be leaving. They'll be leaving the meeting. You'll see them disappear off the meeting.
Right.
Public wants to stay, this link will stay open.
Yes, it will.
Who can you will be coming back uh when the executive session is done, so.
Exactly. Thank you, Mr. Uh, Dr. Hackett.
Okay, we've come back. I believe we have everyone. Who are we missing? I believe we're only missing two people. Ms. Cobb-Lemare and the mayor. Most of you guys are muted. Can you hear me? Can you please, can you unmute?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, let's, Kyle is unmuted, Cyril's unmuted. Okay. We've emerged from executive session. And no action was taken. I give the floor to Ms. Dolan, please.
Sure, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that the policy subcommittee take up a discussion and potential writing of a policy around online code of conduct.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Roll call vote on this. For this to go to the subcommittee as far as rules of decorum for school committee members. Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Gacoras?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So that will be remanded to the subcommittee. Obviously, they'll be looked in the able hands of the chairman of the Policy and Education Subcommittee. And this will be taken up ASAP, I'd like to think. With that, that concludes our business for this evening. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
Mr. Gacoras?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.